I'd like to welcome you to the July 15th West Des Moines City Council Meeting. Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, please sign in. John, we need your sign in.
Turn your mic on, John.
Tom, I might just have you read that.
Five members present.
Okay, any changes to the agenda, Ryan?
There are a couple of changes. Item 4L and item 5B both led to stormwater regulations have been removed from the agenda to allow staff more time to work on those. We anticipate those coming back for the August 5th meeting.
Okay.
Move the agenda as amended.
All right, please vote. All right, item 2, Citizens Forum, which is the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on any items that's not part of public hearings or new business. I wanted to start, though, first with the key to the city for Jim Miller, for all of his efforts in Valley Junction. So Jim, if you'd meet me up at the podium, please. We're sorry we're losing you to Cedar Rapids. I haven't called Palm Rans to find out if he had anything to do with that. But we wish you well. We're having the actual, more formal key to the city actually engraved. Tom, you want to read what it's going to say for Jim?
In recognition and appreciation of your leadership to define nurture and grow the Valley Junction district apart and so it was the one. Thank you very much.
Jim, how many years have you been here?
Fourteen.
Yeah. You know, we take great pride because that's where our community started. And Valley Junction continues to get stronger and better as we go. It's a huge thing of honor for all of us. A lot of people enjoy it, and it is such a much better place today because of all of your efforts. On behalf of the city council and the city staff, we wanted to thank you very much for all your time and effort, and we know how much Valley Junction meant to you. So if things don't work out in Cedar Rapids, please come back.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say a few things. For those of you that don't ever get a call on your cellphone from Tom Haddon's cellphone, it still made me pause, like, of course, thinking, what did I do? But that's good. Tom called last week to make sure I'd be here, but I want to thank all of you and thank all of you certainly. Valley Junction really is a very special place. I also want to thank you for all of your support, also to introduce my wifey, Elaine, who most of you know, and our son, Noah. Valley Junction has been a really great place. I had a phone call last Friday from a reporter from The Washington Post who visited West Des Moines and Valley Junction this spring for a political event. And she said to me, I think it's a really cool place. And I said, well, I think it's a pretty cool place, too. And she said, I have a question for you. She said, what makes Valley Junction work? And I said, two things. I said, told her, and this article will appear sometime in the next month, I said, I think it's two things. It's the people and the partners. And she said, when you say partners, who do you mean? And I said, I mean, the city of West Des Moines and Polk County. And I said, the community. I said, could the community really believes in Valley Junction? But certainly, as a partner, we couldn't act. The city of West Des Moines is held up throughout Main Street, Iowa, to say, here's how Main Street and the city works together. They don't fight. We don't disagree. We figure out how to get things done. So again, thank you all very much. It is certainly bittersweet, but Cedar Rapids is our hometown, and I'm excited to, we are excited to move back there. So again, thank you all very much. Thanks.
Join us up at the podium and just give us your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Mario and Cheryl DeSantis. So we're excited to announce that we're going to open up a Rosati's Pizza at 50 Ten Mills Civic Parkway, just down the street from you. And we wanted to just ensure that to all of you that you all will be invited to the Family and Friends Night. We're looking for an opening date of somewhere around 9:13, although that's Friday the 13th, so we may change that to the 14th. But we really wanted to come here, and I just wanted to say my thanks to Dennis Patrick, who is the Plans Examiner, and Mike Whitzel, the Fire Manager. I used to own some Jimmy Johns around the greater Des Moines area, but I was on the operation side of that partnership, and Cheryl and I are going to do this one by ourselves. And they just helped me tremendously and answered all my questions before I made my submittal, so I had no issues with my submittal, except for the, right, the fire notes that came back, which we'll take care of. But I just want to let you guys know that two fantastic individuals and the whole crew that's in that office, right from the gal that, you know, helped me at the front desk, and Dennis really did an outstanding job. So I just want to say thanks.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
Thank you for coming to West Des Moines.
Yeah, congratulations. We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else for Citizens Forum? Mayor, City Council, City Manager reports, Jim.
Nothing this time, Your Honor.
All right, Kevin?
Nothing this time, Your Honor.
Russ?
Just a quick update on some actions that we took at DART. You know, we had DART come and present to us as some of the changes that they're going to be making in some of the routes across the metro, and they specifically focused on the ones in West Des Moines. One of the changes in the routes involved, we were doing essentially front door drop-off and pickup at Wells Fargo, and we were going to be stopping that. We're trying to create some efficiencies in the route, and where we gain those efficiencies make other routes even more efficient in other parts of the city. And we held a number of meetings and heard some feedbacks from some individuals that worked at Wells Fargo, and we came up with a compromise. We are going to be doing a small loop through Wells Fargo, but not going to be doing the front door service that we did before. And I think people were agreeable to this, so we made that adjustment in the change. And then we, another one of the changes that, in the routes that we agreed to, and I'm really excited about this, and I think I talked about this last time, is that we are doing a pilot in Urbandale for the Mobility on Demand. We are essentially going to be taking a bus out of the service, and in that area, and there's very low ridership in this area, we're going to be doing a pilot project for Uber and Lyft and taxis and seeing how that works and studying that so that we can hopefully see if we could apply that to any other areas. We also, so we approved those changes, and those changes will go into effect October 13th, so we do have some time yet before that actually happens. And then we did an RFP, as you know, for the Transit Optimization Study, and HNTB was selected as the contractor, and we approved having a contract signed with them. I think staff is still working on getting the final details of that contract. But that firm is essentially going to help us to identify other modes of transportation. We're going to be looking at everything that's out there, from, you know, those cars that you can basically rent on the street and move it somewhere, and then somebody else can rent them, to the scooters, to the, I think I've seen electric bikes, and all kinds of other modes of transportation. We're trying to make sure that we have the most efficient, effective service model possible at DART. We've also looked, had a big discussion about our advertising policy at DART. There was some advertising that went on, and I guess there was a constituent in Ankeny who didn't agree with the advertising and his taxpayer dollars being used to have that advertising on the bus. So we have combed through the advertising policy, and we're looking at making some changes to that. We'll probably vote on that next month. And it's coming down to, I think, three different ways that we can look at the advertising policy. Right now, it will be commercial advertising and then also allow governmental bodies to advertise, and 501(c)(3) is, that's currently the way that it is right now. There will be some sort of limitations put on religious advertising, political advertising. We've had the attorneys go through and look at this and make sure that everything's being done properly so that we don't have potential lawsuits in the future. And we're trying to determine if we're going to do just the commercial, which would limit our liability the most, or also allow the governmental bodies and the 501(c)(3). If you do that, there are some loopholes that people can go through, and we could have some issues involved with that. But if we don't allow the 501(c)(3) and the governmental bodies, there are some PSAs that are out there that may not be able to happen, some partners that we have that are nonprofits that may not be able to advertise. And of course, we're always looking at our revenue and making sure that, you know, we are able to efficiently operate DART, and we'll lose some revenue if we tighten up the advertising policy. So we're going to be looking at that, I believe, at next month's meeting. Trying to think, there was something else I wanted to update you guys on. Oh, we're also taking a look in the very near future where the bus barn is located. City of Des Moines has had an agreement with a commercial developer, and they've gone into the spot where, next to where the bus barn is, and there's been a little bit of pressure to have DART move out of that location. The bus barn that we have now is a little bit antiquated, maybe doesn't serve our use like it should, and so we're exploring two things. One, moving to a new location and determining what the price of that is going to be. And two, what would be the cost if we were able to somehow remodel, rehab the current facility that we're in? But again, we're kind of being pressured out of that as well. So we're going to be entering into those studies in the very near future as well. Part of the issue with that is, how many electric buses are we going to have? The more electric buses that we end up having, the less accommodating the old facility is, even if you try to rehab it. So anyway, that's the goings on at DART. That's all I have to report at this time.
John?
I just want to commend Sally and the Fire Department. On July 3rd, we had our annual parade, which is a great tradition, and I know a lot of our constituents love coming out and participating in that. And I think it started at 6:00, and I think it was raining up until about 5:59. And so there was a lot of scrambling there towards the end, and everything went out and without a hitch, and it ended up being a beautiful night. So thanks, everyone, for helping organize that.
Absolutely.
Pulling it off.
Renee?
Yeah, I'd like to supplement and add to that, too. I had on my report to thank Sally and the Fire Department and the police for all the services that they provide to make sure that the parade went smoothly. And Sally's staff was extraordinary in the kinds of support that they gave each of us that was in the parade. I would like to also just thank Jim personally, myself, for all that he has done for Valley Junction. When I began to run for office, Jim was the first person that I talked to, just to give me history about what's going on, and he gave me an earful in terms of learning about that important area. And so I just want to say personally, Jim, we appreciate everything that you've done. You've been a great ambassador for that area, and thank you. Every time that I've talked to you, you've been helpful. So you're going to be very missed, so, but thank you.
Hey, Tom?
No, Your Honor.
All right, item 4, consent agenda. Any item that any council member wants to pull?
Or N.
All right, I'll take a motion for the rest.
Move.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, 4N is a resolution to approve the Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Redesignation as Great Places Community. Russ?
Well, in my day job in the legislature, I staffed the Transportation, Infrastructure and Capitals Subcommittee, which makes decisions on funding out of RIF and funds the Great Places Program at $1 million. And so I just want to make sure that I'm above board, and for that reason, I am going to, as minors this issue is, abstain from this.
Okay. Someone else?
I won't move that.
Second.
All right, please vote on 4N.
Four yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
Item 5, Old Business. 5A, Amendment to City Code Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 9, Traffic Schedule, Section 5, No Parking Zones. 44th Street, Ashworth Road, to 75 feet south of Ashworth Road on the west side. City initiated, it was continued from the June. Third City Council Agenda, it's an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. There are no changes. And I know we all received some additional correspondence from Mr. Carver and his wife on this issue, and then there was one additional email I saw today from one of the other residents in support of what we were doing that came to, from Renee, through Renee.
Yeah, and they were wanting a compromise, the two that I sent.
The 50 foot instead of 75?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So...
Move consideration in the second reading.
There, second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I guess, I guess I would just make a comment, and again, I commented on this last time, and I know this is a very contentious issue, and I understand that. You know, and we have been contacted, I've seen the emails back and forth, and, you know, any time somebody's losing parking is a big deal, especially if they have no other place to park and they've got a big family. So I understand what's going on here and appreciate this very much. You know, I had, I know a lot of us were looking and trying to come up with some kind of a compromise that made sense, but the problem is here that, you know, if you talk to the public safety experts and the traffic engineers and whatnot, 75 feet from the center line is the minimum that you have to have it to be able to ensure public safety. So any compromise that we were to make would be jeopardizing public safety, and so for that reason, I'm going to be supporting what we have here, and I do feel for the Carvers that are now going to have to park down the street and walk. I understand that's not convenient, but again, we just can't make a compromise when it comes to public safety.
Okay. The second reading's been moved in second, so please vote on that.
Five yes. North amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by amending provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls. Move approval in the second reading?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes. Move waiving the third reading and adopting final form.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, item 6, Public Hearings. Item 6A, the council's being asked to continue the public hearing to the August 5th council meeting.
Move continuation to the August 5th meeting.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Item 6B, the council's also being asked to continue this item to the August 5th council agenda.
Move continuation.
Second. All right, please vote.
Five yes.
6C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider amendment to city code Title VII Public Ways and Property, Title VIII Building Regulations, and Title X Subdivision Regulations. Update residential terms and lot type descriptions for residential and commercial development. Clarify procedures relating to the vacation and disposal of public streets, sidewalks, and alleys, and add a provision allowing rent abatement consistent with the state code initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
June 28th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6C. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. In its ordinance for the first reading, it came through the Development, Planning Council Committee with a unanimous recommendation.
Move consideration in the first reading.
There, second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I do have a question, and I apologize, Lynn. I wasn't able to call you ahead of time to get clarification on this, but I guess, is there some sort of overall summary that you could give as to, or Linda, as to why we're making some of the changes? I mean, they look like, most of these changes look pretty good. I mean, with the rent abatement and whatnot, it's going to essentially deter slum lords and whatnot, right? If they don't keep their property up, we're going to be able to abate the rent? We're not able to do that today, or?
Linda Schimmel Development Corporation, correct, and that was a recent change within the state ordinance, so we're adopting the state language on that.
Okay. And then some of these other things that we're doing in here, changing the definition of single-family housing and all those different...
This is really a cleanup. What we did is, a couple weeks ago, we changed some of those definitions within Title IX in the zoning. And in order to make our code match across different titles, we're just updating those same references within that title. So that's why that definition cleanup was part of this proposal. This is, the whole ordinance is really just kind of cleaning up a couple of different things we've had on our list to do.
Okay. Just reading through it, it looked more substantial than cleanup, and so I'm just, just wanted to make sure that I asked some of these...
Yeah. For instance, on the lot type description, there were so many small changes to each one of those descriptions, we just took the whole old section out and replaced it with the new section. Materialally, there's not a whole lot of changes.
Okay.
It just was easier to keep the whole thing straight.
Gotcha. Thank you very much, Linda. Appreciate it.
Okay, it's been moved in second for the first reading. Please vote.
Five yes. North amending city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by many Title VII Public Ways and Property, Title VIII Building Regulations, and Title X Subdivision Regulations.
God bless you. Move approval the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
6D, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Raccoon River Land Company LLC annexation located along the east right of way of Grand Prairie Parkway and generally north of southwest Adam Street, approximately 77.1 acres. A voluntary annexation initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
June 26th, 2019, in the Madisonian.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6D. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have a resolution to approve the voluntary annexation.
Move approval.
Second. Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Item 6E, the council's being asked to continue this item to the August 5th council agenda.
Move continuation.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
6F, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider agreement for private development initiated by Penta Partners LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
July 5th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6F. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's a resolution to approve the agreement, came through Finance and Administration Subcommittee, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
Item 7, New Business. 7A, Herd Land Company LLC and Herd Windsor LLC Platinum of Survey, Northeast Corner of Veterans Parkway and Southeast Willow Creek Drive. Combined parcels for legal description purposes, Herd Land Company LLC and Herd Windsor LLC. It's a resolution to approve and release the plata survey, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval and release the plata survey.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes.
7B, $12,935,000 of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, Series 2019 E. City initiated, we have a motion to receive and file a report of bids and a resolution to authorize to improve the loan agreement, providing for the sale and issuance of bonds and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the bonds. And we have our financial consultant here tonight to share the good news on the bids that we issued.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Suzanne Gerlach with BFM Financial Advisors. We went to market today with two series of bonds. The 2019 E bonds are for the annual CIP borrowing that the city does each year, $12.9 million, as the mayor mentioned. We received eight bids, and I'm going over the bid tabulation, sorry, that everybody has on their desk. Received eight bids from over 40 different firms, so excellent participation in a pretty busy market today. These are 12-year bonds with an S&amp;P AAA rating. The city is rated AAA by both Moody's and S&amp;P, and this year is our S&amp;P year, so they affirmed the AAA rating. The true interest costs between all eight bids range from 1.73% to 1.81%, so very, very small range with a large number of bids today. The winning bidder was FTN Financial Markets. This was out of their New York office. They actually won both series of bonds today, and their true interest cost was 1.73%. So that's, we're under 2% again. So I didn't know that we'd be here. I'm very pleased to say we're back under 2%. And there was also included the refunding, the current refunding of the 2011 AGO bonds. Every time we go to issue bonds for the city, we look for any opportunity to refund outstanding debt for savings. Our goal for a current refunding is 3% savings, and today we got 6.5% net present value savings on those 2011 bonds. So even though 2011 was a good year in the market, we're still saving another $188,000 on those bonds.
That is huge. Thank you. That's awesome.
Very pleased with that. We did resize a little bit. We don't need any premium on the refunding. We don't need any excess proceeds for the refunding, so we did resize for the refunding, but we did keep the proceeds for the CIP bonds at a 1.73%. We felt it was prudent to keep that, and then we'll look and see if we need to reduce next year's borrowing. So that's the plan.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
Can I get a motion for both of those items on 7B?
Move approval.
There, second? We can do the motion and the resolution together, can't we, Ryan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes.
All right, so item... Yeah, 7C is $15,400,000 of general obligation recreation complex bonds, Series 2019 F. City initiated, we also have a motion to receive and file a report of bids and a resolution authorizing an approval of a loan agreement providing for the sale and issuance of bonds and providing for a levy of taxes to pay those bonds.
Yeah, and this was the second series. This is for the Recplex. This will be paid by hotel motel taxes, but we did use urban renewal authority. These were 20-year bonds, also rated AAA, and we received six different bids from 37 firms. So we did have two firms that didn't participate in the longer, the longer bonds. The winning, I'm sorry, the range of TICs here, because they're 20-year bonds, it's a little bit higher rate, 2.51% to 2.63%, so still a very narrow range for all of the different bids received today. And FTN was the winner again today in Syndicate out of the New York office. I didn't mention, but the cover bid, which means a second-place bid, less than one basis point off. So there was very much heated competition for the city's bonds today in the market, very highly rated, very sought-after bonds in the market. And for the Recplex, there was $1.3 million of premium that we will be keeping to go towards the project, so...
Excellent.
Yeah. And I should mention that when we first started talking about the Recplex, I think the first schedule I ran was around 3.25% to 3.5% being conservative, and my sale details had 3%, so I was very pleased to be at 2.51% today. So, and we're well under the target annual debt service that we had talked about in planning, so very happy.
Good.
Let me ask, when we bond for 15.4 million, do we have to hold back like 1% for bond reserve, or?
No. This is GO bonds. These are GO bonds.
Okay.
Yep.
Gotcha.
All right.
No reserve.
We've had 7C, 1 and 2 moved in second. Please vote.
I don't think we did get a motion in second.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Thanks for all your help.
Yeah, very welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Five yes.
All right, 7D, amendment to city code Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 9, Traffic Schedule, Section 3, Special Stops Required, 91st Street and Abram Drive. City initiated its ordinance for the first reading. And it came through Public Services City Council Committee with a recommendation as well.
Move consideration for first reading.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes. North amending city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by many provisions pertaining to the traffic code relating to official traffic controls.
Move approval for first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote. All right, please vote. Five yes. All right, seven E, Amendment to City Code Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Nine Traffic Schedule, Section Five, Special Restricted, No Parking Areas. Grant the city authority to temporarily prohibit parking in and around construction zones. City initiated. This is an ordinance for approval of first, waiver of the second and third and final adoption due to the public safety issues.
Move approval, but I think first we have to move to.
Reading?
Yeah, we move the first reading.
Yeah, we have to move to suspend the rules, though.
We can do that after the first reading.
Okay. Move, move consideration of first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Five yes. Norance, amend in City Code, the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, by amending Title VI Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Nine Traffic Schedule, Section Five, Four, Special Restricted, No Parking Areas, to grant the city authority to temporarily prohibit parking in and around construction zones.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the wording I need, but move to.
Approval of first reading first.
Oh, move approval first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote. Five yes.
Move to waive the council's rules or whatever the, suspend the rules.
Okay. Is there a second to suspend the rules?
Second.
All right, please vote on that. Five yes.
Move waiving the second and third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote. And while you're voting, I might acknowledge, Jim Dickinson joined us again tonight under 4J. We've, we've got another Iowa Clean Air Attainment Program grant, and so now 109 of 118 signal intersections will be under the adaptive traffic control.
How many do we have in total? I mean, that's.
119.
119.
We only have 10.
10 left.
Only 10 to go. That's incredible.
It's become a game for Jim, I think.
In a short amount of time, correct?
Yeah, like probably four or five years, something like that. It's incredible.
Nine years.
Nine years? Okay, well, it's.
Time-wise.
It's unreal.
It's still significant. So, thank you.
Well, and I know, because the Iowa DOTs ask for information on how successful this has been, I've shared it, and I know that Iowa DOT Director was on Simon's show recently and used that as an example of how people are trying to creatively manage traffic without adding more concrete. So, we continue to be held up as a model city for this, and we appreciate all the support that we're getting to help us fund this. But congratulations, Brett and Jim, to your department on all the great work you're doing.
Absolutely. I just heard some city representatives from Ankeny bragging about how they have done this. And I said, well, we've been doing this for years.
Nine years.
Nine, to be exact.
So, wouldn't you think you're going to get the last 10 done, Jim? That's like, no, it's like we've got to cross the finish line.
Next year.
Next year. A 10-year project, and all the, all the smart intersections where they have cameras on you and Big Brother, everything, okay. But it makes traffic better.
Not Big Brother, imagine.
All it runs is the traffic signals.
All it runs is traffic. That's why Siri knows when I'm talking, you know, what I should have as an ad, yeah.
Not only that, but it reduces carbon emissions and saves gas, and it's good for the environment.
It's great for the environment.
Boom. Frustration, absolutely.
All right, item eight, receive, file, and or refer Jim Miller's, what if we didn't accept?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I moved that we do not accept it.
Second.
He has to keep coming back.
Sorry.
All right, item, item nine, other matters. Are there any other matters any council member wants to raise before we go into the workshop?
I would just echo Councilwoman Hardman on congratulating Jim. You know, I sadly found out about this. I was talking to Renee, and she said, geez, I just can't believe that, about Jim Miller. And I said, what? What about Jim Miller? He's going to Cedar Rapids. And, boy, I just about started crying. It's, it's, we're going to miss you a lot, Jim. You, you're just a huge champion for Valley Junction and West Des Moines, and you come up here, you come to every city council meeting, you dress us, address us with dignity and grace, and.
Because he doesn't trust us.
Extremely. When you talk, people listen. You're extremely intelligent, eloquent, and I know you'll be great at Cedar Rapids. And I'm thinking like the mayor, though, I got to give a phone call to my old buddy Jeff Pomerantz and see if he had something to do with this. If he does, he's not going to be on my Christmas card list anymore. So, thanks for everything.
Thanks, Jim. Tremendous job.
We know it's not always easy, Jim. We have some desperate interests down there that you're managing, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we will adjourn.
I want an autographed copy.
... council meeting and reconvene for our workshop prepared agreement.
[inaudible]
Concrete crew averages over 3,000 square yards of concrete patching. First, the area to be replaced is marked.